Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 7:11 PM. Welcome to tonight's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of Monday, October 6, 2025. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission and public may participate in the public hearing. All participants will be able to speak when called upon. At this time, I would like to explain the procedures to be followed during the meeting. The commission has both a consent agenda and an agenda for consideration of individual items. Items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and non-contested. Item number one, citizen comments, provides the opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on items that are listed on the consent agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes, and the secretary will let you know when one minute is left. For all plats and plans conditionally approved or disapproved by the commission, the applicant will be provided a written statement of the conditions for the conditional approval or the reasons for disapproval. These conditions and reasons are not arbitrary. They are directly related to the requirements of Local Government Code, Chapter 212, and include citations to the law that is the basis for the conditional approval or disapproval. For individual consideration items, I will call the applicant or his or her representative to present the case. The applicant will have up to five minutes to present the case, which includes all persons representing the application. Then those wishing to speak in favor and those wishing to speak in opposition will have up to five minutes each to present his or her comments. Prior to speaking, please give your name and city of residence. Remember to speak directly into the microphone as this hearing is recorded for the public record. Any handouts you wish to provide should be given to staff. And here at the end, please do not approach the commission. Applicants are not required to stay for the entire duration of the meeting and may leave once their item has been heard. The next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission will be Monday, November 3, 2025. The next item on our agenda is citizen comments on items listed on the consent agenda. April, has anyone signed up to speak on any item on the consent agenda?
No one signed up. Please proceed.
All right. Secretary Merrick is absent today, so I ask Vice Chair Heck if she would please read the consent agenda into the record.
Thank you, sir. We have five items on the consent agenda for approval. The first is the approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes of Tuesday, September 2, 2025. Item three is case 2025-234-P-L, FedEx Freight Irving. It's a final plat located at 3100 South Beltline Road. Third item is on the agenda as item four, 2025-277-P-L, Monera Edition, which is located at 8201 TriStar Drive at 8230 Esters Boulevard. The fourth item on the consent agenda for approval is 2025-195-P-L, the Irving ISD CTE Edition. It's a replat located at 2200 West Irving Boulevard. And the final item for the consent agenda approval is item seven, 2025-339-P-L, Highland West Irving Number One. It's a second revision, a replat located at 1214 West Pioneer Drive.
All right. And do I have a motion for approval of these items on the consent agenda?
Motion.
For Commissioner Lightfoot, I have a motion and a second from Mr. Pritchard. And the motion passed unanimously. Then we have two items on the consent agenda for disapproval.
Thank you, sir. Those would be items six and eight on the actual agenda. The first item is 2025-273-P-L, Pearl Landing Edition, a preliminary and final plat located at 1101 West Royal Lane. And the second and final item for disapproval is 2025-341-P-L, Murtaza at Shady Grove Edition, which is a replating of lot for commercial uses. There's no address here.
No address on that one.
Address is here if you want. This should be fine.
Okay. You said it's this address at 1215 West Shady Grove Road?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion for disapproval of these two items for the reasons set forth in the staff memos?
I'll make a motion. Second?
We have a motion and a second for disapproval. Please vote. And the motion passed unanimously. And we move on to the individual items. Item number nine, zoning case 2025-74-ZC located at 1629 Glen Valley Drive. Is the applicant present? All right.
Emilia Zepa, 1629 Glen Valley.
Great. Thank you.
Persilov Glanthin, 1802 Green Oaks, Irving, Texas. I'm going to be translating for the applicant.
Great. Thank you. All right. Is there anything you would like to say about your application?
Estoy aquí en la dirección 1629 Glen Valley, Irving, Texas. Por el caso de construir un techo atrás, no sabía que tenía que pedir permiso. Es mi primer casa que tengo, entonces estoy aquí porque quiero cumplir la ley del condado. Se me dio información incorrecta. Me llegó un sobre a mi casa de aquí de la ciudad, pero no entendí bien qué es lo que quería que se hiciera. Sin embargo, saqué un plano pensando que ya iba a estar bien a todo y no fue así. Tenía que hacer otras cosas que no entendí, la verdad. Hicimos ese techo de la parte de atrás porque tenemos dos trailas, una ven, que es la usamos para el trabajo, que si lo tenemos en el sol se puede dañar la herramienta de trabajo. Gracias.
Okay. Good evening. The owners here are representing, their property is 1629 Glen Valley Drive. They're here because they did build a carport in the back of their home. They did receive a letter from the city regarding the carport, and they're here because they want to make sure they are in compliance. They do have vehicles back there, work vehicles, that do need to have shade because they have material in there that could be damaged with the heat and the sun. And so she, you know, the letter she received, she thought that she did the needed things to be in compliance, but it turns out she didn't. So she is here today. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicants?
Are they running their business out of the home?
No.
So if you ultimately do receive a variance, I wanted to check if you were aware that you will also have to comply with certain building and engineering requirements to get it permitted. So this would only be the first step.
So they're saying, si te dan el permiso para el carport, vas a tener que hacer ciertas reglas sobre el construcción. ¿Estás listo para hacer eso?
Sí, queremos hacer lo que ellos quieren. Decidan lo que les digan.
They said, yes, they're willing to do whatever it is that you guys need them to do to be in compliance with construction and engineering.
Actually, might be a question for staff. I mean, kind of following up on Commissioner Denny's question. So is that a structure, has it been inspected and is it being looked at that is conforming the codes?
And I can defer to Wade as well, but if it's not been permitted, then the staff has not had a chance to look at the plans, the construction plans, nor visit the site. So that would be part of this process is to get that permit and then go through that inspection process.
It's my understanding, this is a metal structure, so in this case, it's completely finished. So we'd need a letter from a structural engineer. Basically, since we were unable to inspect that during the construction, to inspect the piers underneath the post, et cetera, would ask for an independent structural engineer to review the carport construction and issue a letter to the city with his seal on it. And that's somewhat common in these situations.
Any other questions for the applicants? Okay. Did you have questions or just discussion? Okay. I think that's all the questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of this item? Anyone in opposition? No? Not be anyone else who'd like to speak, enclose the public hearing, or return it to the commission for discussion and a motion.
So I just want to see what the commissioners feel about the variance. That's pretty big. Eighty-two percent variance on the carport size. Have we proved that before? Have we had that kind of variance before? Are we concerned about that part, other than just being a carport at the back?
I mean, I don't recall us having that before. It being a carport in the back, it doesn't really concern me particularly, but yeah, I don't recall that coming up, but most of the carport, I know the call the carport cases that I can recall were in the front yard, and it was usually about the front yard setbacks. That's been the biggest issue that we've had about carports. Okay. That helps.
My only comment would be, since the neighbor is in, the neighbor that it would be, that's encroaching on, doesn't have a problem with it, I don't see any concern
Any other comments?
I got a question for the applicant. Is this a freestanding carport, or is it concrete slab underneath it?
There's no concrete slab underneath. Okay. He says that, yes, it is freestanding. There's no concrete slab underneath it.
Is there any plans in the future to put siding down the side of it, to enclose it in two ways?
No.
Okay. Any further discussion, or do we have a motion? Commissioner Lightfoot, did you have anything further?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Reyes, looks like you're next.
I just wanted to follow up with what Mr. Wade mentioned, would, just so they're all so aware and out of curiosity for myself, is that out of the applicant's expense? The sealed?
Yes.
Yes, and the metal thing? And is there, sorry, would there be, is there any, how would, I'm so sorry. My question is, does the city provide, like, recommendations in terms of, like, that sealed, like, three?
We can't provide recommendations for engineers or for contractors.
Oh, so that would be completely on the applicant?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Ahmed?
If there are no further discussions, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I make a motion to recommend zoning case 2025-74-ZC to the council for approval.
A second?
We have a motion and a second recommending approval. And the motion passes seven to one. That goes with a recommendation of approval, and it still needs to go to the city council. So you'll still want to go to the city council meeting for them to discuss that. All right. Item number 10, zoning case 2025-129-ZC located at 906 King Avenue. Is the applicant present? Would you like to present?
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Yes, so my name is Murtaza. I'm here to represent the 906 King Avenue case.
And where do you reside?
For the 906 King Avenue.
Okay. You're living there?
No, no, no. Sorry. I'm living at 925 King Avenue.
Okay. You're here in Irving?
Yes. I am an Irving resident.
Okay.
And again, I'd like to apologize to everyone. I wasn't here last time. I was out due to work, and I appreciate you guys for scheduling this for me. And the reason I'm here is because I am trying to ask for a variance for the current ordinance for me to be able to subdivide my current property, the 906 King Avenue. And I believe there were questions last time that you guys had, and I'm here to answer those.
I think one of the questions had to do with the way you have it divided up, the proposal ends up with a T structure or T format for one of the lots, rather than what appears like a similar property to the west of it was divided into three long lots. And we were wondering, you know, one, if you did it that way, you would avoid needing some of these variances, and if there was some reason why you weren't going that route, why that wasn't an option for what you were trying to do.
Sure. Yeah. So one of the reasons I went with the way I designed it is I was planning on keeping the middle lot, right? I was planning on building a structure there. So currently, my current plan is, there's a structure on there today. I'm planning on renovating that and renting it out. And then my future plan is to, you know, demolish that, build a house there, sort of near the back end. And I wanted to leave the spaces on the left and right as a backyard for myself, because I had future plans there. And so that's the reason I left that the way it is. And I was planning on selling the tract one and two off because I have had a lot of interest from people that wanted to move to Irving.
Any other questions for commissioners?
The question I got is, you're keeping the center lot at 65 feet. You're already tearing down the little one-story frame, 24-by-14 building, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So why couldn't you, the requirement that the city has is 59 feet. Couldn't you take and make the lots a little wider, like 57, 58, even them out a little bit without affecting the center house?
Yeah, I can do that. So for the structure, I wasn't planning on taking the entire structure out. I was planning on, because currently in that lot, there is no garage. I believe that structure there is supposed to be a garage, so I was going to sort of move that by five feet. I think that was the requirement. Take five feet off and turn that into like a one-car garage. So that's the reason I, so I'm not planning on taking that entire structure out currently at this time, just modify it. And the reason I went with the numbering was I just wanted to keep it, I guess, you know, even, but if I need to add, like you said, 57 or something, just to do that, I can do that, no problem.
And what was the reason for not going all the way to the back?
So the reason is my future plans, what I was planning on is eventually demolishing the current infrastructure that's there and rebuilding a house, but I was going to move it near the back end, have like a long front driveway with the house in the back, and have basically two side backyards. And then I wanted, and because there's structures and stuff there which I'm planning on reusing. So that's, again, that's a future plan, but my current plan is not to do any of that. Just thinking ahead.
Well, at the last meeting, we looked at this, and I think, at least I can speak for myself, I could support it if it's three individual lots and not necessarily teed. I think we can get closer to the 59 feet if we moved the lots over a little bit and evened out the lots. But I have a very difficult time supporting the T design especially.
So if that is going to be a problem, I don't mind making it all the way back if that's the only problem. I don't have any issue with that. I wouldn't like to do it, but I'm open to doing that if that's what is required.
If he moved the lots back, that would give us another, what, 2,500 square feet, 2,600 square feet, 55 by 56?
It's more in keeping with the tree ordinance.
Yeah.
If we do like a 57, if we do, like, if you widen it to 57, so 57 by 57, estimated would be about 3,200 square feet.
So that would bring us up with the 7,700 to close to what the neighborhood is? It'd be real close.
Yeah. I mean, it's kind of hard to say right now. He might still need a slight variance.
Yeah.
But it wouldn't be very much. It'd be a pretty nominal variance at that point.
Yeah, it'd only be like 100 square feet.
Right. It comes up to about 10.9.
Yeah, so it would only be like 80 square feet.
Yeah, so part of the problem is, you know, in terms of calculating that, we can't really do that here at the moment. And for people, and I'm sort of with Commissioner Lightfoot on this, I'd be inclined to support something along those lines, but we wouldn't know what kind of variance you'd need. We would need you to go back and work with the staff in order to try and do that. Would you be open to doing that with a postponement, so you have a month to work with staff and identify what variance you would really need?
Yeah, I'm definitely open to doing that. Again, just one thing I would like to add, one of the reasons I went with the square footage, you know, the length and the width, the way I did it, was because my right next-door neighbor, I believe theirs was like 56 and 140 a lot, that's right on the, I guess, the right side of this lot, if I'm.
On the east side.
East side, I believe. Yep. And that's the length and the width that they had. So that's one of the reasons I went with that length, that hey, it was already approved and there's a house on there already, and, you know, as a minimum, and that's how I did that for my breakdown. did that for my breakdown.
Yeah, I think for me, the square footage is the bigger part of that, and getting closer on the width would be nice, but the square footage is really the bigger issue in terms of compatibility with the neighborhood.
So you're willing to move to the November 3 meeting to work with staff to bring us back something so we could see the exact variances you're going to need with the changes?
Sure, I can do that.
Okay.
Yep.
Commissioner Reyes, did you want to say anything further?
I was just going to add, your two, I know you were mentioning future plans for track one and track two, are you planning on selling them or renting them out?
No, so the track one and two, my plan is to sell that, those tracks, just the middle track, the track three is what I'm planning on keeping.
To keep and then build a new.
Yes.
I would just want to further just comment on, based on just like the conformity of the neighborhood and then residential value, I do agree, and just want to make the comment that pushing it fully back and then going more into compliance would be more reasonable and on a profitable side. I, my opinion, though, yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. We'll go ahead and continue our public hearing, and then it'll come back for the commission to make a vote on whether we ought to postpone or not.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? No, then I'll return it to the commission for any further discussion and a motion.
If there's no further, go ahead. Go ahead, it's you, ladies first.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone zoning case 2025-129-ZC.
I'll second.
And this is to the November 3 meeting?
Yes.
Are you second? You're second for the November 3 meeting?
Yes, I second for the November 3 meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to postpone this item to the November 3 meeting. Please vote. And the motion passed unanimously. All right, thank you. All right, item number 11. Zoning case 2025-183-ZC located at 2620 East Growweiler Road. Is the applicant present? Sir? Mine coming up, yeah. And then we've talked about in the work session, did you want to say anything further, or are you open to answering questions?
Yes, I'm open to answering questions.
Okay, did you want to say anything further about it before we ask questions?
I'll just wait for the questions.
Okay, great. Oh, your name and city of residence?
Jesus Fajardo in Wiley, Wiley, Texas.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, do the commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
What's the reason for putting gravel versus concrete?
It's a temporary thing. I know the owner personally, he has future plans on changing the plans and everything once the area develops or something. He does commercial real estate. So he's my friend slash mentor, and I just needed a place to store my equipment for my work, and he's helping me, and I'm helping him by keeping the area clean. And he had previous issues with people dumping on the lot because it was open, so kind of mutual help.
So how long is this going to be a temporary use?
Honestly, I have no clue. I've been selling off some of my equipment. I'm more transitioning into building houses. I do demolitions right now. And just, I just need to park my trucks, and it's diesel trucks, light duty though, 3,500 Dodge, 3,500, those type of trucks. And the other vehicles are 26,000 pounds, GVWR and under, so it's not heavy. So I heard you in there talking about heavy usage, is it heavy like a lot of driving, or heavy as in heavy weight?
Heavy as far as weight?
Yeah, so it's not the 18-wheelers or big tractors, excavator machines like that. It's just smaller diesel machines.
I saw tractor trailer cabs in there, parked in there, so is it just for parking? Didn't have trailers attached to them, just had the cab parked on the lot?
The skid steer?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am, they're like 6,000 pounds. So they're not like the big giant excavators, smaller machines, skid steer machines, bobcats, caterpillars, those, things like that. Is that what you asked?
No, what I actually saw parked there, because the gate was open, were the cabs to 18-wheel, 18-foot tractor trailers.
All those, yeah, they're not there no more.
Okay.
So I had some 18-wheelers, and I sold them off. So I'm transitioning businesses, so those things were, they're gone. That's what I told the gentleman that was checking, and he gave me some time to move them, and I did.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Also, I noticed today it looked like the sign had, maybe it got knocked down.
Yeah, I heard that.
I think the staff mentioned that, just that you all need to get it back up there.
Yes, sir, I'm going by there on my way.
Wonderful, yeah. Okay, and then, it looks like no other questions. Thank you.
I'll go back to my.
You can go back?
Okay.
All right, anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? I'll return it to the commission for discussion and a motion.
If no further discussion, I'd like to make a motion on zoning case 2025-183-ZC for denial.
Okay, we have a motion and a second recommending denial.
I'll second, oh, you already seconded.
You can be a third?
I'll be a third.
All right, we have a motion and a second and a third recommending denial. Please vote. All right, and the motion passes six to two. Now that goes with a recommendation of the city council for denial, but it's up to the city council ultimately. So that's who you'll, you're scheduled for. For October 23 for a city council meeting, and that's, they'll actually make the decision. It goes with a recommendation of denial, but that's, but again, it's up to the city council how they want to handle that. All right. Item number 12, conditional use permit 2025-188-CUP located at the 2500 block of West LBJ Freeway. Is the applicant present? Sir?
Good evening, Andrew Yeo, 1782 McDermott Drive, Allen, Texas. I'm the survey engineer, represent the owner and the developer. I'm here to answer any question or concern.
Okay. Do any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Would you have any renderings of what the car wash might look like?
We don't have it at this time. Yeah, in the next step, we're going to have the architect to.
Did you have any renderings of any previous car wash that you all have, maybe?
We do have it, but I did not send it to Ken.
No problem, thank you.
I don't have the rendering.
No, no, we did not provide to you.
Okay. Where have you, have you built any other car washes in the, in the metroplex? Have you built other car washes here in the metroplex?
Yes, we did. It's under design, we have one in Oklahoma, and we have in Froni, and also we do have in Mansfield, it's under the design phase too. And then also Lancaster, yeah.
Thank you.
Would you be willing to add additional landscaping to sort of hide the vacuum thing in the front area somewhat?
Yeah, landscaping will be a next step when we start the construction plan, so we will put together with landscape requirement, with your request, if more scrub to, for screaming stuff, yeah, we can do it.
So I'm not sure if you heard during the work session, one of the concern that Commissioner Hack has had, which I share, is that it's right in the front of the frontage road, so we're sensitive to like what the look and feel of this car wash is. You know, in DFW area, there's a lot of nice, modern-looking ones, and then we have some in our mind that we see, like the rundown ones and traditional-looking ones as well. So that's why we're asking about the rendering, but if you don't have that, can you speak to the concept of this car wash? What would the look and feel be like?
Our concept is more in modern, and then we have a tower to, like, to build a high tower to stand up and then make it look nice. Of course, this is a big business, this is like couple million dollar project, they want the building look nice to attract the customer, where you stand up and modern. Unfortunately, like, I do not have the rendering to show you guys this time.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Are the car washes you own are all by the same owner, or do you buy them and sell them out, or?
The owner will own it and operate it, yeah.
So they own the one in Mansfield, in Froni, in, I think you mentioned Oklahoma? It's the same owner, or it will be a different operator, or?
It's the same owner, yes.
What would it be the name?
I don't know the name, but the owner is here.
Yes, sir, my name is Gopal Wai, 7500 Summit Drive, Irving, Texas. It's going to be Star Clean Car Wash.
Star Dream Car Wash?
Star Clean Car Wash.
Star Clean Car Wash.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. It says here on our case notes that Great Plains Bank is the owner. So how does that work with this gentleman?
So he have a contract with the property owner, so like now they under the contract for permitting process. So after we gain the permit, they're going to close the property, and then he will purchase the land, yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? No, thank you very much. Or did you have a question? No, okay. All right, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? I'll return it to the commission for any discussion and a motion.
I have a bit of a hard time supporting it without seeing the rendering and the landscaping plans, what that would look like. It's a beautiful piece of land over there with HEB coming, Home Depot and some, you know, American Red Cross and stuff like that, and I would like to see some level of, you know, maintaining that. So I would be up for postponing it if they're willing to come back for rendering. Can we ask them that?
Would you be willing to have this postponed so you could provide us with some renderings and a proposal on the landscaping?
Yes, we can pull away, and then.
Do you think a month would be enough time to do that?
Yeah, yes.
All right.
One thing I'd like to suggest on the landscaping towards the front and the side, Home Depot Drive would be keeping them about three to four feet tall, landscaping down the front and the side when you drop the rendering, okay?
Okay.
And the staff will be able to work with you in terms of the landscaping and.
Yes.
Drafting what it is that we would need to be voting on?
Okay.
If there are no further questions or discussions, I'd like to make a recommendation for item number 12, conditional use permit 2025-188-CUP for postponing it until the next commissioners' meeting on November 3.
I'll second, and just as a follow-up, I want to thank you, because I would have voted no for this, given we were looking at a CUP for an indefinite time period. So the fact that you're willing to work with us to improve it and make us feel a little bit more comfortable about the aesthetics on a really important piece of land, I appreciate.
All right, we have a motion and a second to postpone. Please vote. All right, and the motion passed unanimously. All right, item number 13. Zoning case 2025-212-ZC located at 512 North Sowers Road. Is the applicant present?
Good afternoon, I'm Jacenia Mejia, 500, ah, I'm sorry, 500 Colony Core, Irving, Texas.
Priscilla Viglante, 1802 Green Oaks Drive, Irving, Texas, and I'll be presenting on behalf of Ms. Mejia, the applicant. We were in work session, so hopefully the presentation can answer some of the questions that you had. Okay, so Ms. Mejia's property is at 512 North Sowers Road. It is Ashley Beauty Salon, so let's get right into it. Just to give you a quick background of Ashley Beauty Salon, Ms. Mejia has owned Ashley Beauty Salon for the last 18 years. It's been in Irving, it was actually very close to here, off of MacArthur and Rock Island. The owner lives three houses down from me, actually. She's been in Irving, has raised her family in Irving, and loves to give back to the community. She partners very frequently with the police department, One Community, in fact, you probably may have seen her at Coffee with the Cops last week at PJ's Cafe. When the opportunity presented itself, she wanted to invest in her own brick and mortar business. She was not going to be able to renew her lease at her past location, so she did look for other opportunities to put a salon. It is just her. She is the owner, and she is the only employee. And she wants to be in Irving. So that is how 512 North Sowers Road came to be. Many of you may remember that this property has been vacant for many, many years. It was really falling as far as quality, like it was just really starting to become very aged. And so Ms. Mejia bought the property late last year, has pulled permits, several permits to renovate the property. I mean, it is really an amazing property, I've been able to walk it, and we can show you some before and after photos of the site improvements. When she bought it, it looked very, very different than what it is today. She has put a lot of hard work and investment to get this property to where she could actually work out of it. And so she's here today because she wants to open her salon. And so she is requesting a zoning change to allow variance to the minimum required parking spaces and the minimum required driveway aisle width. The current zoning is community commercial, but she is requesting a detailed site plan in community commercial. So in the work session, there was talks about the parking lot, and so she is needing a variance for her parking lot. They're asking, the city's asking for 10 required spaces, she needs, she can only fit seven. Doesn't matter how you draw it, because of the way the property is, the property line, she's only going to be able to put seven parking spots on there. And then also the driveway aisle width, you know, it's tight, but it has been tight, and it doesn't matter what use is on there, it's going to be like that, that's how it is. And it's also kind of sandwiched in between the power pole and the fire hydrant as well. There were questions about the shared parking agreement, so yes, Josh, you are absolutely right, Mr. Skinner, the city does not enter into shared parking agreements, so to the north, she is not able to get any parking spots. To the south of her property, she was in talks with the property owners. From her understanding, the property owners did communicate with the city to find out more information on what all that would entail, and after that conversation, they came back to her and said that they did not want to enter into a shared parking agreement, because if they had future plans to develop that property, it may impact that. So she is not able to get a shared parking agreement on either side for those extra spaces. And so, yeah, we're here today, looking for your recommendations so we can get Ashley you know, Beauty Salon back in business, right? And so, hopefully, you know, she can open her salon, and she can use it. So, do you guys have any questions?
I know I do one sort of follow-up. So, you said that you're the only employee? You're the only one who'd be there working?
Yes.
Okay. It seems like a big space for that. Like, I think that's somewhat causing the problem on the parking is that the building, the size of the building is then mandating some of the parking requirement. But what's happening with the rest of the building?
I don't know. I don't have, I'm on business. I know it's not my plan, buy this big building. I give it the, I have the opportunity to buy it, so I buy it. So, if before, I know it has, it have a lot of problem. I mean, to put the concrete is not my problem for the money. The problem is cannot have more land. If you have more land, I give you 20 or more space. My problem is not have more land. And I don't know, I don't have idea, get a quiet number of parking for that one.
I don't know if that answers your question. So, she doesn't have plans to employ any other employees? You know, when she was looking for a building so she can still operate, this is the property that she decided on, so...
I worked, I working for 18 years across the street right there, so I work self. A lot of people in the city, I see me, and I need my service. So, everybody see Ashley, it's only me working the same, because I do, I work only appointments.
Questions for other commissioners?
I went and saw your building and whatnot, even your pictures of before and after. That's a very big building for one person. I see here where it looks like you got your workstation. You have no plans for the rest of the size of the building to do anything with it at this point, or? Because if you do, you're going to need the parking spots, not for you, for someone else.
Yeah.
Yeah, but right now, it's only for Ashley Salon, and that's only me.
Wow.
Could we go back to the picture for Coffee with the Cop, or whatever you call it? So, who are these other people here? Are they Irving police people, and this is your family with you?
Yes. This, my family, my daughter, and my son, and Irving Police Department, one community.
Love it. Thank you. And then, so I just wanted to be sure that they weren't employees, since you're saying it's only you as the stylist. You generally can work, just so everybody, maybe other people may not realize, you can generally work on two people at the same time. That's why you've got two bowls. Somebody might be processing hair color while you're coloring, cutting someone else. So, more than likely, it'd be your car and maybe two clients at the time. Three spots, three parking spots essentially then, out of the seven.
When I have appointment, I, the customer only call me, Ashley, you stay here? Yes, only come in, and I take it maybe 30 or 45 minutes for one customers.
One at a time?
Mm-hmm. One at a time, yes, correct.
I noticed when I looked at the building, you got Ashley Beauty Salon already painted on the end of it down there. It looks kind of...
Yes. So, if you notice on the sign, that marquee is now on the side of her building right now. Yeah, so that she took that sign and put it on the side, yeah.
I totally, totally want to support you. I'm just worried about downstream, you know?
Yeah. Is there anything that can be done in terms of, like, it seems like she doesn't really need the size of the building for what she's planning on using it for. Is there any way of addressing that? I mean, obviously, if she then expanded the business, then yeah, she would need the parking then, but, yeah, I agree, it doesn't seem like she really needs that kind of level of parking now.
I mean, typically, the only way that would be done is by defining tenant spaces. So, kind of officially, in a way, feel free to chime in, dividing it into, you know, putting a wall or something so that it can't be expanded, you know, tenant space one and space two. And so, the CO would be only given to the first tenant space and not to the second one, because whenever we have a larger shopping center, the COs go to each of those individual tenant spaces. So, that's the only way I can think of, is in order to be limiting the square footage, limiting the capacity of that part of the building.
So, then to understand that, let's just say 25% of the building she's going to use, and we could limit, we could talk about, go ahead, repeat what you were saying back.
Well, it would have to be physically delineated, so there would have to be some type of wall...
We do it in the...
No, no, it'd be, it'd be done through the building permit process. I don't know, we may need another postponement on it just to kind of define what those tenant spaces would be and what the square footages would be. And then, if we, you know, she uses all the parking space for one tenant space, then that second tenant space wouldn't be usable. We have that, that comes up...
But that would be okay, since that's kind of the...
Yeah, and it's actually not unusual condition. It happens sometimes.
Ma'am, would that be something that you'd be open to, a postponement to try and work that out so that we could get it more clearly defined, what amount of the building space you would be using, and that would avoid some of the problems on the parking?
She says she's almost waited a year. One more month, she can come back.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, though, before you go?
Do you understand what our concern is? You got a nice, long building there that could be a CPA's office, or, you know, two or three other things, but they're going to need parking spots too. And so, we're just concerned about the size that you're not using.
And so, okay, we'll see you guys next month.
Commissioner Arma, did you have a question?
No, I'll just leave it to discussion.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? Then I'll return it to the commission for discussion and a motion.
So, this is like one of those, like, she's in a pinch. Like, there's a building that could be used, and it's limited by the parking. But there's a lot of things going for it as well. This building that was old, rundown, she took the time to renovate it, made it look good. So, that tells you about the integrity of the owner, that she's willing to comply with whatever that's needed. And then, another guard that's in place is that she's the only employee, at least right now. And then, one more guard after that is that she's by appointment only. So, she's not taking a walk-in. And if she's by appointment, even if there's two employees there, or three employees there, seven spaces is a lot for her salon. As far as asking them to break the space up, I personally feel like that's undue hardship on a small business. And once we part that into tenant space, that other space can never be approved for anything, because there's no parking space to put a business over there. Versus, if she was even working alone over there, she could put some salon products over there in rest of the space, some kind of accessory that she could use, where she's still the only employee working there. Or even if you think about the case where she has another employee working there, that still gives them parking in a way that is not going to cause overflow to neighboring businesses. So, I see a lot of things going for them, and I would like to support it.
I'd like to make another comment. The size of that building, and she's, she's got her salon there, it's the perfect size for either to rent out spaces to other beauticians and to have their own business in the same building, but they're still going to need more parking.
The only thing I would say is exactly what we've already, what I mentioned earlier. If you've got one stylist, maybe she's working at the most on two people. That's three parking spaces. They've all arrived in their own cars. That's three parking spaces out of seven. If she gets a second stylist, that's two stylists, and that's six spaces out of seven, if they're working on two people at a time. So, I don't, I really appreciate what Commissioner Fallada said, because I really feel like this is something I would like to support. And I do agree that asking to separate for tenant is expensive, and doesn't get us where we want, where she needs to be.
I feel that I want to second also, and third on that, because she has waited and put in the work. And then also, I feel that waiting another month, yes, it is a month, but if she can be in operation, and we supportive, we supporting in it, I want to be a go.
Yeah. And I don't respect the comment about there's a risk of renting it out and stuff like that, but if you look at the history of the applicant, she's worked with integrity so far, and making the application, and, you know, applying and stuff like that. And given that trend, it leads us to believe that she would stay in compliance.
Let's see, yeah, we're in the, we're technically not in the public hearing, but I gather you wanted to make some sort of comment. So, if, would you like to say something further?
Yes, it's respect for the, my big place is, I think, is, I not like it drama, so I like it work self. So, my thing is half, half the building is for my, for my station, and wash her and wax, a little room only wax, I brought wax, and the other half is for, push my products, like, I have no need a chair, put in a bag, my products, my everything. So, this, this is the question, the sort, the half is for, only for me, and the other half is for like a storage.
Correct. All right. Thank you. Any further discussion from the commissioners, or do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion if there's no further question. I'd like to make a motion for item number 13, zoning case 2025-212-ZC, recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second recommending approval. Please vote. Yeah. And the motion passes five to two with one abstention. All right. And I'm sure Priscilla will explain to you the next step of the process. All right. Let's go on to the next item. Item number 14, zoning case 2025-216-ZC, located at 400 West Irving Boulevard. Is the applicant present? Sir?
Good evening. My name is Mike Briggs, live in Allen, Texas, and I'm here with CSO, representing Long John Silver's.
Okay. Did you want to present anything further?
I was listening to the work session, and I heard one question about the site layout regarding the standard requested layout. The main reason we are presenting this particular site layout is really for the site efficiency. The two curb cuts that we're showing are existing curb cuts, and rotating the building to put the full frontage on Irving Boulevard, in order to make the drive-through work correctly, would require a mirror of the building, which doesn't exist in the current Long John Silver's prototype. So, that's, operationally, that's not something that they have looked at before. So, that's why we have presented it in this, in this particular fashion.
All right. But there's nothing about the site itself that would prevent, prevent you from doing that kind of design?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay. All right. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? Then I'll return it to the commission for discussion and a motion.
I'd just like to make a comment that I feel constrained by the heritage crossing district standards. I mean, it's a respectable application, but it just doesn't fit the vision that's been put in place for the district. So, for that reason, I wouldn't be able to support it.
I would agree with Commissioner Denny.
So, if no further comment, why don't I make a motion for zoning case 2025-216-ZC for disapproval?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second recommending disapproval. Please vote. And the motion passes six to two. DVP, located at 2150 Kimbrough Drive, and this is for final action by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is the applicant present?
I'm Rajan Patel, and my wife see on 2150 Kimbrough Drive, and here is my son, Bhavin Patel.
Good evening. Thank you for all yours time today. My name is Bhavin Patel, 2408 Creekside Circle South, Irving, Texas. Here representing my mother, who is the property owner at 2150 Kimbrough Drive. She couldn't make it today. And my father is the applicant, Rajan Patel. This is to construct a single-family home in the Association, Homeowners Association of Cottonwood Valley. We initially, back in September of 2024, we got this approved with City of Irving, and we also got our permits back in October of 2024, but we had an issue with Los Cleaness Association, where they wanted us to move our side yard setbacks. We got it approved for five feet on each side, and Los Cleaness Association came back and told us to shift the house two feet over, so a seven-feet side yard setback next to our east side of the property, where there's a current single-family home. And on the other side, on the west side, there's a canal or, yeah, so there's nothing there. So, you know, just because the size of the house, we don't overshadow the smaller house next to us.
Thank you.
I'm here to address any questions you may have.
Do commissioners have any questions for the applicant?
I do. Thank you. You said that very succinctly. But is there a Cottonwood Valley Homeowners Association that has standards as well that you have to have approved?
Yeah, Cottonwood Valley...
LCA.
So, we've spoken to Cottonwood Valley Homeowners Association, and so, with City of Irving, and then having the blessings of Los Cleaness Association, we believe that Cottonwood Valley would support this.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Denny?
So, for the Los Cleaness Association, do you have their approval, or are you going back to them?
Los Cleaness Association, we don't have the approval yet, because we had to do the whole process over again. So, they suggested us to shift the house two feet over, and that's why we're here. Made our changes to the plans, and we shifted the house two feet over, and so we had to redo the process. And so, after this, we strongly believe that Los Cleaness Association will approve it, approve of it, because we've had like three meetings with them, or about like multiple meetings with them, trying to approve our five, five, five-feet setbacks previously approved.
And if I'm correct, when we approved it the last time, Cottonwood Valley Association was okay with everything?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. The last time?
Yeah, that's, I'm struggling with this, because I was in the Cottonwood Valley Association offices past Friday, and they said they had not received, that they had not approved this. So, that's why I'm struggling to understand why you came back to the city when Cottonwood Valley Association has said no verbally. They said they don't have an application from you.
I speak to John, and he says it's be fine as far as the City of Irving, and Los Cleaness approve your plan.
I don't have a problem with the plan. I supported you last September.
Yes.
Yes.
I will likely support you tonight. My concern though is that you definitely recognize that L C A, as you already know, and Cottonwood Valley have more restrictive requirements for their H S As. So they have final say, doesn't matter what the city says, doesn't matter what the commission says or city council. You still have to fight your battles with, uh, John at Cottonwood Valley.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? Then I'll return to the commission for any discussion and a motion. And again, this is for final action by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
If there's no further discussion.
Hold on one second. Yeah.
Good, thanks. If there's no further discussion with the commissioners, I'd like to move development plan twenty twenty-five dash two.
Final action.
Finalize it. Development plan twenty twenty-five dash two-three-two D V P for approval. Final action by planning and zoning.
Okay, alright, we have a motion and a second for approval, final action by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Please vote. And the motion passed unanimously. Alright. Item number sixteen zoning case twenty twenty-five dash two-four-three dash ZC located at twenty-seven thirteen Douglas Avenue. Is the applicant present? Sir.
Hey, good evening, my name is Obed Contreras and I reside at twenty-seven thirteen Douglas Avenue in Irving, Texas. Um, the applicant and my father who's here is the, is the owner of the house. And I'm open to addressing any questions, but just, uh, real quick, just the scenario how we got into this. Um, my parents decided to make their retirement house here. Um, it was a smaller home before. Um, they demolished it, um, and then made a, a much bigger home that would be comfortable for them. Uh, the builder unfortunately, whenever he designed it, uh, designed it too, uh, wide and the city asked, um, uh, it, it didn't quite fit on the size and they had to kind of, um, push it back a little bit more on the backyard. They already had, uh, an existing shed back there, a structure. And because of that, they had to demolish it, um, and they just truncated it and made it, made it smaller. So there was already an existing structure there with the previous home. Um, now they made it smaller, but as you guys can see, the issue was my dad, one, didn't know that he had to get a permit. He was like, it's already an existing structure, I'm just making it smaller, we fit, uh, moved it over. Um, and as we were trying to get the permit afterwards, um, we found out, hey, there's this easement back there and we just had to address that. So this is why we're requesting the rezoning.
Alright, any questions for the applicant?
One quick question, are there any windows in that building?
Uh, there's, uh, one small window on the backside, over here on the backside to our left.
Up at the eve level, the high, the high roof?
Yes.
It's up high?
Yeah.
And so that is where on this property map? It looks over a house in the back, right? It's on the one point, it's on the, it's right on the property line.
It's, it's going to be a, a small little window on this side, um, to my left.
Where it says three feet, six inches.
Let me see. Yes, that's correct.
The left-hand corner?
Yes.
Okay.
It's centered on that, on that, uh, wall right there. There's a small, smaller window.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you very much.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, just to clarify, that, that window is for lighting only. It's not like it's set up high, nobody, that's a high roof on that. So nobody is that tall looking out that window.
No, and then, um, by the way, it's, since it's so far back on the backyard, it's not like it's overseen into somebody's house. Right next to that, our next door neighbor has their shed right there as well. And then next to us, there's another shed and then in the corner, another shed. So it's just basically blocked out with sheds instead of, so, yeah. Thank you guys.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? No, then I'll return it to the commission for any discussion and a motion.
I'll make a motion for zoning case two zero two-five dash two-four-three dash ZC to be forwarded to city council, um, for approval on October twenty-third.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second recommending approval. Please vote. And the motion passed unanimously. Alright, special fence plan, this is item seventeen, special fence plan two twenty-five dash two-seventy dash S F P located at seven fifteen West Tinglewood Drive. Is the applicant present?
David Satterfield, rise side at seven fifteen Tinglewood Drive, West Irving, Texas.
And did you want to say anything further or just opened up for questions?
Questions.
Alright, any commissioners have questions for the applicant?
Question, I know we didn't get feedback from, I think your direct neighbor who would probably be most closely impacted.
Jose behind me.
On, yeah, they're on Ryan Street.
Yeah, I spoke with him and he's, he's happy because I'm raising it from a six foot to eight foot. And he said he had no problem with it. Had no problem with bringing it out to fifteen feet, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? No, then I'll return it to the commission for any discussion and a motion.
Um, just want to offer my thoughts on this and, uh, I don't support this case because I don't feel this fence can goes along the neighborhood. I mean, I believe it's really going all the ways to like to the sidewalk. And, uh, it just doesn't go align that, that street, uh, or neighborhood. So for that reason, I cannot support it.
I, I just want to echo that comment. I, I think going that close to the sidewalk, um, hinders the look and feel of that neighborhood. And if, if that start getting replicated, um, it would further hinder the look of the neighborhood. So I have a hard time supporting it.
Alright, any other, any further discussion or do we have a motion? Sure, you can come up just very briefly though.
If you go in the neighborhood around the area, especially on Pioneer Street, all the fences are maybe, I'm sorry, all the fences are within maybe two feet from the sidewalk. So I'm willing to move it back if that's the case. I was just trying to get the most use of my backyard. Um, but all the streets, all the houses on Pioneer, one that's basically identical to mine, that's facing Pioneer and, excuse me, Tinglewood, has the exact same situation. And that's kind of where I got the idea to move my fence out.
I mean, um, on my, I was speaking myself, I mean, I'm okay with maybe a five, a five foot variance. And that will give it about ten feet to the sidewalk, but not all the way to the sidewalk. Not in this case specifically, this house, how it is positioned in this neighborhood.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with the variance, I just have a problem with this much of a variance, it's too close to the sidewalk.
At this point, I'm probably going to have to disagree with my two commissioners. I, I don't think it going to the sidewalk, you still got eighteen inches, so the city's still got room to do what they need to do. Traffic has no issue with it for it being on the outside of the curb, not necessarily on the inside of the curb. Um, so it's not hindering anything as far as, um, traffic. It's, it's still not hindering anything as far as any city work or anything that needs to be done. So I would be in support of it.
I agree with Commissioner Lightfoot. Um, we've approved a lot of fences that are up to the curb line, uh, the inside curb line. So I don't really have a problem with it. This is a unique case where the front yard of your neighbor is your side yard. That's really the only difference.
Any further discussion?
If no further comments, I'd like to make a motion on special fence plans, uh, two zero two-five dash two-seven-zero S F P for recommendation for disapproval.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second recommending disapproval. Please vote. And that means the motion fails, right? Yep, okay, so the motion fails. Um, so, but if we do a motion in favor and it fails as well, then it's, goes with a recommendation of denial. Okay, alright, so we need another motion regardless.
I'll make a motion for special fence plan twenty twenty-five dash two-seven-zero S F P for approval to city council.
I'll second that motion. Okay, let me know when you're ready. We, we do, we do have a motion and a second, but we are waiting until the technology is ready for us to vote. Alright, please vote. Okay, so once again, we have a four-four vote. Since this was a motion in favor, um, that means that when the motion fails, that means that, um, the item goes with a recommendation of denial. Um, but it's still just, it still goes to the council either way. Be able to make your argument to the council and, and try and convince the council to permit the fence. So, but, yeah, alright. Then let's move on to the next item, which is item number eighteen. Special fence plan twenty twenty-five dash two-seven-nine dash S F P located at sixteen fourteen Arcady Lane. Is applicant present? No? This is the one they wanted postponed, okay. Uh, anybody else who'd like to speak in favor, oh.
Can you please step up to the podium and state your name and address?
I, I just wanted to go ahead and, uh, make sure that, I think we missed the beginning on one-two-one-four West Pioneer.
Provide your name and address, please. Your name and address for the record.
Oh, Andrew Camacho and, uh, it's, uh, Rockwell, Texas.
Oh, uh, one of the plants?
Yes, it's a minor plant. Minor plant.
Okay, yeah, those, it was approved, um, which one was that? Yeah, that was approved on the consent agenda.
Okay.
At the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, thank you so much.
Oh, yeah, no.
Sorry, guys.
Alright, uh, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of, of item number eighteen? Anybody in, uh, opposition to it? Alright, then I'll return it to the commission presumably for a motion to postpone to the next, uh, P and Z meeting.
I'll make a motion to postpone to November third, uh, commissioner's meeting for special fence plan twenty twenty-five dash two-seven-nine S F P.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to postpone, please vote. And the motion passed unanimously. Item number nineteen. Zoning case twenty twenty-five dash two-eight-two dash ZC located at nine twenty-two East Fifth Street. Is the applicant present?
Hello, my name is Jimmy Medina, uh, ninety-two East Fishery, Irving, Texas, and I'll be the translator.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Anayeli Lopez.
Um, we are here because we wanted to get approval for the extension of our porch. We were here for the work session. Um, I heard you saying something about how it looks. We do have additional pictures for you to, uh, see. So this is just from the side view. Uh, I heard that y'all might be a little confused about how far back it goes. Uh, we were having some water damage, so that's the reason why we just wanted to extend it. Um, we, I believe they went up a little bit more, a foot up what the original, uh, roof is. Um, and then they just tried to connect it as close as they can. And then, do you have any questions?
Thank you. Do any of the, uh, commissioners have questions for the applicant? No, it doesn't look like it. Thank you very much.
Wait, when did you buy the house?
We bought it in two thousand ten.
Two thousand ten. Thank you.
And y'all went ahead and finished it just to cure it up, correct? You didn't do it to violate building inspections or anything?
Uh, no, uh, we wanted to, when we were fixing the roof, because we were changing it, um, that's when they found the water damage. So they just wanted to, mostly my dad was the one, he wanted to extend it so he can prevent from more water damage to happen. So at the beginning, he didn't know that, oh, and the door also, if you can see in the door, we also had additional water damage there. Uh, he didn't know at the beginning that he needed a permit. So when they, they got the notice, they came, they asked, uh, what they needed to do. Uh, and they pretty much gave every information and everything that they, that y'all may have needed from us.
Yeah, but you were provided with a notice of violation and, uh, why did you continue doing some work?
Um, we pretty much just had, when we got the notice, we had it like that. We just had the, the beans that were holding it. And then, um, the only thing that they did was put the beans that were going from the, from here, right here. Um, and that's all they did. From there, we stopped and, and we, we put in the paperwork and we were in the process of doing all that to get this meeting.
You just made it more structurally sound so it wouldn't collapse?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then this is from the other side.
But did you get approval to put those additional beans? Did they tell you, did you go and ask, am I able to continue to finish this or at least complete it to make it more structural sound?
Um, when they changed the beans to the ones that, that we have right now, it was the day before they came to ask. So it was in between, when they got the notice, they did it and then they came to ask.
Mr. Ahmed, do you have a question?
Yeah, a quick question. So, given this is a structure that was done without plans and permits, um, if it goes forward, one of the things you would have to do is get independent engineering review because we have no idea how that post is sitting on that concrete pad. Is that something you would be willing to do?
Uh, yes.
So I heard you say, so your daddy's doing this?
No, we originally did it with my uncle, so the roofing part was my uncle. Um, he works in changing it and everything. And then, uh, when they saw the damage that they have, that's when they decided to do the additional part, the extension.
So y'all replaced that roof?
Yes, and we did get a, a permit for that.
For the roof. Any other questions for the applicant?
One thing I'd like to point out is look at the house behind it to the side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I was saying, there's a lot of houses on this street that have similar.
They're pretty much all consistent.
Yeah.
Question I got for you is what are you planning on doing as far as finish out on this? I know it's just raw wood right now and everything, what are y'all planning on doing?
Um, so pretty much the, he wants to finish the top of it and then he does wants to, uh, for the beans, he does want to put, uh, concrete and rock up so it could be stronger. Uh, so, yeah, pretty much halfway through here. So he does wants to have it like strong enough where it doesn't move at all.
Okay.
When you say he, is your dad?
Yes, because he's the one that's doing the plan. We, we really don't get into that. He's the one that's been doing the planning and. He's the one that's been doing the planning and all of that. He's not able to make it today because of work.
I noticed on the footings, they have, actually have a brick ledge around the outside to accommodate that.
Yeah. Any other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you very much. All right, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? And I'll return it to the commission for any discussion and a motion. If there are no further, go ahead.
My comment in regards to this, I don't dispute the fact that there might be other ones, like we just saw the one next door, that they built a similar structure. I don't, it might go along the neighborhood. My issue is that they were issued that violation to stop, and they continue doing it. That's where my issue really comes from with this case. So, if, at some point, I mean, we have to make a case of, hey, you cannot continue doing work, and even whenever you're being told to stop, you're going to continue doing it. I mean, the work's going to keep spreading out. Hey, just come to Irving, work with it, even if they told you to stop, keep working it. They're going to let you keep going. So, at some point, we gotta stop this. And again, it's not about conforming with the neighborhood, that's not the issue that I have. My issue is the notice of violation and the continuation of the work.
I would have to say that I don't think they continued on with the work. I think they stopped. I think they got to a point where they could secure it up. Adding the cross forty-five beams definitely secures it up and puts the pressure, takes away the outside perimeter. So, I think what they did is just make it more safe until they figured out what they can do with it. From the pictures and everything else and from what I've seen out on the site, I don't see them continuing on with the project. I see them just getting it secured up and stopping to a point, and I don't hold that against a homeowner for making sure that that is done for the safety of their family or anybody else, the mailman or whoever decides to walk underneath it. Right now, it's just, it's secured up, so...
Mr. Richard?
I'd have to echo and agree totally with Commissioner Segredo on this, that there comes a point that people go far and they do things and they asking for forgiveness as opposed to for asking for permission. And I just can't support it when I've seen, I've got questions about the support and they got the beams set on a piece of concrete block and, anyway, so I just couldn't support it.
Mr. Lightfoot?
If, no further comments, I'd like to make a motion on case, zoning case two zero two five dash two eight two ZZ for recommendation for disapproval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second recommending disapproval, please vote. And the motion fails. All right, so now we need another motion.
I'll make a motion for zoning case twenty twenty-five dash two eighty-two dash ZZ for approval.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, and he will let us know when he's ready for us to vote. Ready? All right, motion second recommending approval, please vote. And the motion passes six to two. So, this will still go to the city council, so you still want to go to that city council meeting on October twenty-third, because they have the final decision about whether this will be approved. It will go with a recommendation to approve it. All right, on to item number twenty, zoning case twenty twenty-five dash three zero nine dash ZZ located at four twelve Elaine Drive. Is the applicant present?
My name is Mary Ann Hampton, I'm four twelve Elaine Drive, Irving, Texas, and five oh six oh.
Did you want to say anything further or just open up for questions?
Just any questions, I'll try to answer.
Okay, great, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? It doesn't look like it, okay.
Just trying to stay dry.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? No, then I'll return it to the commission for discussion, any discussion and a motion. Mr. Ahmed?
Yeah, I have a bit of a hard time supporting this case, given that there is a covered garage that can be used to protect automobile or whatever they have. I just don't see the hardship to add a carport in the driveway in addition to the garage.
Yeah, ma'am, why don't you come up?
Yeah, the garage is enclosed. It's not, it doesn't open. It's enclosed, it's been built in.
I'm not sure the microphone's really catching you.
The garage has been closed, it's built in. I mean, it's part of the home now.
Okay, all right, thank you. That helps. Yeah, I think that my challenge with it is there doesn't seem to be anything else like it in the neighborhood, that it would seriously encroach on the front yard setback, and that it seems to be out of keeping with the neighborhood. Now, the carports has been something that I know the city council is figuring out what they want to do, and so, in terms of my role, I feel like sticking, recommending to stay with the current structure of the neighborhood is where I should vote as a planning and zoning commissioner, but the city council ultimately has the final say, regardless of what we say.
I would have to support this, because it's within the ten-foot that we've always pretty much went off of. As far as Commissioner Skinner's comment, none in the neighborhood, somebody's got to start somewhere. And as long as it's not encroaching within the ten-foot setback that the city has pretty much supported throughout, I would have to support this.
Fisher, I have a question. I think Fisher Ray is next.
That's okay, go ahead, Terry.
I was just going to second that. I feel, you know, you have to start it somewhere, and you shouldn't, the applicant shouldn't face any hardship wanting to protect her vehicle and also herself from rain.
Mr. Richard?
I had a question for you, ma'am. Were y'all, were you the original owners of the house?
No, but we've lived there thirty-seven years.
Okay, did y'all enclose the garage?
Uh, no, it was enclosed when we bought it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If there's no further discussion, then we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to forward zoning case two zero two five dash three zero nine dash ZZ be forwarded to city council October twenty-third meeting for approval.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second recommending approval, please vote. Oh, and the motion fails. Okay, so then we need another motion. I actually thought I was in the minority on that one. That was for approval. So, yeah.
For denial.
For, yeah, recommending denial.
I'd like to make a motion on zoning case two zero two five dash three zero nine ZZ for recommendation for disapproval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second recommending disapproval, please vote. Are you ready yet? We're doing too many of these, running these, voting too quickly. No speed voting allowed. All right, you ready? Okay.
Vote to deny.
Vote to recommend disapproval.
Thank you.
Okay, and the motion passes five to three. Now, like I said, though, it still goes to the city council either way, whether it went with a recommendation of approval or a recommendation of disapproval, it's ultimately up to the city council to make that decision. All right, next is item number twenty-one, development plan twenty twenty-five dash three five seven dash DVP. Is the applicant present? Yes. Then you also have the companion case, the zoning case.
Yes, sir.
And do you want to present and discuss them at the same time?
Sure, yes, I can do that.
Great.
Good evening, my name is Ravi Godia, and I'm from Valley Ranch, Irving. So, this property of mine, in two thousand six, we constructed the Bennigan's location. The city had granted us a variance for the parking, two-point-eight-five seats per parking spot. We never had an issue. The building had caught fire, we decided to demolish it and redesign it so that it looks even better and more attractive, and it brings more value to the community and the neighborhood and city. We were successful with that. We built it, and the city approved our plans, and the city had asked us prior to approving our plans to repeal the RAB, SP one RAB, because I guess, maybe I'm saying it incorrectly because there's a quota or something like that to that. We did that, because we didn't need it at that time. So, now that we won the SP one RAB, so we are applying for that. Talking about the variance, we still had the variance in place. We only repealed the SP one RAB. So, I decided to go up the variance, because when we got the variance, it was based on foot traffic. We are surrounded by nine hotels within a half a mile radius, not even a mile, less than a mile radius. I have a, let me show you. This is not the most attractive... Do you have that? Yeah. So, you see, I've created this map where we have the Hyatt Place right behind us, we have Fairfield Inn, Elements, Sonesta, all these hotels are, in my opinion, half a mile, not even a mile. So, this is where I'm backing up my foot traffic that is going to come and visit the restaurants. So, hundred, one thousand three hundred and seventy-four rooms, so that's why I'm confident about the foot traffic. Nothing has changed. Even at that time when Bennigan's was there, we would see the parking lot kind of empty or half-full, but there were people inside there. Now, on this thing, I'm requesting the same thing, is if y'all cannot give me the one parking spot to three seats, if y'all can honor that, I would appreciate it, otherwise I would like to retain that one parking space to two-point-eight-five seats, which has already been granted to us. Coming back to the eighteen-foot, can we see our site plan? Is it possible to show us our site plan? Please?
There we go.
No, no, the site plan, sorry. Where we have the sixteen-foot and the eighteen-foot spaces, I think, so it was shown during the discussion. Is that possible to pull it up?
Should be, but it'll take, it'll take a minute.
Okay, sorry. No, because everyone's looking all eyes on me, something. No. No. Yeah, this one, please. So, it was the one with the highlighted green and highlighted green parking spots. Just try one more similar to this.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes. So, the parking spots in the highlighted yellow, that was pre-existing. The city had already approved us, and they gave us the construction permits. The ones in the green, yes, they're new, they're eighteen feet. What we did is, the one on the left, that's the west of the property, the eleven spots, we actually restriped them to eighteen feet. So, we're good there also, if that makes sense. And the yellow ones, that's the...
The north side?
The north side, that's approximately seventeen feet, but that was already approved by the city, and that's why we went ahead with the construction. So, it's, so that's not something that we can do anything about it, because that'll be a hardship to, again, break the parking lot and then again, move it. And the cars are hitting the curb, and the curb also has a two-feet overhang for the cars, if that makes sense. I'm trying to explain it the best way I can.
So, the question I got is, you extended the...
He's still presenting.
No, 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 go ahead.
Okay, you're ready for questions?
Oh, of course.
All right, okay, Mr. Lightfoot?
The parking on the west side, the little subcompact, the yellow spots, you've extended them out now to eighteen feet, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so all that subcon, all that now should be green, basically?
Yes, you're right.
Okay, the ones on the south side...
North side.
North side, the yellow ones that are up there? Is there a way to move them two feet, stripe them in two feet to the utility easement and turn them green so we don't have as much subcompact, and you'll be able to comply with the new ruling of the city?
The one on the left, the one with the seven?
No, the one on the back of the building.
Those ones at the top, yeah.
The ones at the top.
Correct, the number seven, the one with the number seven.
Yes, the number sevens, yes, number seven and number eight.
So, so number one is that's going to be a hardship, because it's going to cost me a lot of money. Seven is not possible, because there's a transformer and a retaining wall over there. There is, we will not be...
Even if we left number seven alone, you've already corrected number eleven, and we went to number eight. If we went to number eight and moved them forward, then you would still be in compliance with the ten percent ratio of subcompact. You wouldn't have to change it, just the section where the number eight section is, move them up about two feet.
So, so what, if I may, what will happen, Commissioner, is I will have to break open the curb.
Cut the curb out, yes, sir.
Cut the curb out. I have plantation in the front, I'll have to move that back too. And it's going to cost me, I've already been approved by the city, what I'm trying to say. The city has already approved my site plan, and that's when I went ahead with the construction. It is not something that I...
Yeah, but the problem with it is, is the building's been added on to...
Correct, yeah.
And stuff like that, so some of the parking was already reconfigured when the building was added on to.
So, maybe I'm not saying it correctly, is when we got this site plan approved...
In two thousand six?
No, 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 in two thousand six it was done. But now, recently, I think so it's two thousand five, two thousand three, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three, when we got this whole thing approved for a new construction, the city knew about these parking spaces, and they approved the sixteen-feet parking spaces, the depth. That's why they issued us permits, otherwise we would have never done that, otherwise we would have tried to adjust the building, if they would have flagged it and they would have said, no, we won't accept this, then we would have done something like that. So, the city can look into the records over there. This is not something that we just sprung it up after construction. It was approved by the city. Then, the city is now telling us, oh, we're not going to, this is not right.
Okay, hold on a minute.
Sure, sure.
Okay, so that up above on the site plan, it looks like there's a utility easement up just north of those lines. Do you know who would have control over that utility easement? Like whether, whether you'd be able to pave over it?
They won't allow us to pave over it. Because those are fiber, I mean, I, it's my property, I go there pretty much every day. First is we'll have to move the shrubs behind. But if we move the shrubs behind, there are those underground fiber optic cases or vaults, vaults, you call them vaults, V-A-U-L-T-S, vaults. So, and pardon, so it's impossible. It's probably not possible. Let me not use the word impossible, it's not possible, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
And like I said, it's going to... And like I said, it's going to, I'm so sorry. Go ahead, Matt.
Thank you. You're saying, when you had Bennigan's?
Mm-huh.
You didn't need all this parking to begin with.
Yeah, that was my memory.
So, so I mean, he's not, he's not, he, he believes that even with the larger space, he doesn't need the required amount of parking, regardless of whether they're green or yellow in size.
Yeah, yeah.
What, what I'm also saying, and if I may again, now we have a three thousand square foot courtyard. So the way we've designed it is we will have more, more traffic in the sense, more people coming in. So that is the reason why we're saying is we want more seats. I can't do anything with the parking. So we are asking for more seats. That's all we are saying.
So I, I do have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Yes.
How, all those hotels that surround?
Mm-huh.
How did they get there? They're walking, you're saying?
Correct.
And certainly from the Hyatt Place, you can walk through the driveway because it's connected to your property. Where are the sidewalks with your property and the other hotels? You can see that?
Yeah, I can see the sidewalks on Google Maps.
I'm sorry, my laptop died, so I can't see them. All right, so you, the, the traffic is coming via, safely via sidewalk?
Absolutely. Sidest, the sidewalks are built out. And in fact, the city even asked us, requested us is to increase the size of, depth of the sidewalk to five feet. We, we did that also.
Okay. And then my second question is, in our case notes, it indicated that you might have multiple restaurant concepts in the building.
That is what I.
So is that like, would that be similar to like a legacy hall where you go in and I could dine at one place and my friends could dine at another place? And then there's communal seating? Or are you talking about seven distinct, or up to seven distinct restaurants? Because to me, seven distinct restaurants would drive more cars as opposed to one group coming who might sample the different restaurants in the hall. Does that make sense?
It does, it does. So it's kind of, so we've called this concept kitchens at the courtyard. So there's up to six different restaurants. We are presenting it to our future tenants or users. One of them is we ourselves. I've signed up with a national chain. It's called Pokimoto. So Pokimoto is a poke and boba franchise. But our concept is to bring up to six different restaurants, global kitchens, to this place. The seating is going to be mostly on the, in the courtyard because they are so compact, these places. Why we came up with this concept, if I may, is I'm, I've been in the restaurant business in Irving for twenty years. So we had Bennigan's, then we even had Rhodesia Grill. Rhodesia Grill, COVID killed us. We had to go out of business. Sitting at home doing, what do we do? What do we do? Then we saw ghost kitchens come up. Ghost kitchens is you cannot touch them and feel them. All you're doing is ordering online, and someone's just bringing the food to you. Then we saw the food halls, legacy halls. We don't have that space to have an, so we came up with this concept is let's have six different cuisines, up to six different cuisines with a food, with a courtyard where people can, families can hang out, men, youngsters, anyone, just hang out in the courtyard. The, the city gave us permission to even put heaters in the courtyard, which we did that. They, we, we added fans in the courtyard. They even allowed us to even put a covering in the courtyard. The city has been nothing but kind to us and very fair to us. But I guess this is the part where I'm saying, let us keep the two point five eight, two point eight-five variance so we can have a little bit more people. So the parking lot, no one's going to be struggling for parking. That's what we have confidence with that because we own the property and we've operated that spot. Not once the city has had any complaints about parking. So, yes, what we're saying is when you give us more seating, it's better for us. It's better for everyone. Come out, take a look, even you saw the rendering, it's a very inviting, welcoming, warm ambiance over there. And we proudly have put the state of Texas out there with our, you know, the Texas map, the blue bonnet, and the Texas longhorns. Take a look at the rendering, and I'm proud to be in Texas now. My kids are there, here. I've been in Irving for about twenty years, and we love it.
So in twenty twenty-three, they issued you a permit to do the addition and all that, and everything was fine?
Yes.
Okay, so the city went ahead and said everything was fine the way it was. I think what triggered this is, is when he requested alcohol?
Yes.
Now they're wanting everything to be brought up to current code. And even the seven parking spaces, even if he moved them up, he's got a transformer there, so he can't really do much up here on the seven. The eight, e- even if he moved them up to two feet, it's still going to keep him out of ratio. He corrected the eleven spaces here, so that helped a great deal. But this will still throw him out of ratio.
Yeah, still be over the ten percent.
He'll, he'll still have to have a variance. It'll never, it'll never go. Plus, it'd be a, a great expense to him as far as taking up the current landscaping, the sprinkler system, the curb, the concrete, you know, et cetera.
And there is a utility easement there, so whether we do it at all is kind of.
Yeah, and they could still come in and have to tear it all out and take away all them parking spaces if there's a problem. Because it looks like the utility easement is what's running this transformer based upon the plans. So it, it's difficult, but the city approved it in twenty twenty-three to allow him to build it. I, I would probably support it. I, I don't see, I mean, he's going to be out of ratio. He's done some stuff to try to correct it on the west side, and I, I, I would go ahead and support it. I mean, it's going to be difficult. I know the city said there really ain't much of a hardship here, but from a developer's standpoint and owning commercial property myself, I can, I can see where the difficulty could be. I mean, the, the stuff he was able to fix, he fixed. I don't know if fixing these compact at the very top, the eight and the seven, is even feasible realistically. So I, I would, I would support it.
With the parking variance? With the parking?
With the parking.
Yeah.
It's been that way since two thousand six. And I think that, like I said, the city had no issue with it in twenty twenty-three when they let it go. It's just that soon as he put the R A B in, it triggered a bunch of new deals. So I would say leave it be, and I, I just don't see any other way to really do it without creating problems. Because even if he moved it up two feet, I mean, if they come in and they got a utility issue, they're going to tear up all that stuff anyway. And I don't even know if he could even put vegetation above, on top of the utility easement due to the growth and everything else. So you're, you're going to change a bunch of stuff up. I say leave the site the way it is and move forward.
Commissioner Reyes?
So two different questions. I want to understand your concept because you are requesting the alcohol beverage and to just follow back up with what Ms. Debbie had mentioned. Are we, is it a full dining restaurant, or is it fast casual ghost kitchen? How is the operation?
It is most definitely not a ghost kitchen. Is it, it's a, it's a concept of part dining and part outdoor dining.
And so the space itself has many different kitchens to operate the six?
They'll have different kitchens.
They do.
We are, we are, so typically, the way ghost kitchens work is the landlord provides the kitchen.
Right.
And people just move in with their other equipments. We're not providing anything. We're providing you space, a shell space. So the tenant will come in and they'll say, okay, I want so much. So we have given, we are going to, we are giving them the opportunity to say, hey, is do you want, how much do you want? So we are ready to divide the space inside, if that makes sense.
So as a business standpoint, it's you're receiving revenue from tenant, as well as operating a restaurant bar?
No.
Is that correct?
No. So this, the, the R A B part is for future tenants if they want to start selling alcohol or they won't do it. But we have to go for the R A B because if I tell my tenant, oh, you're not allowed to sell alcohol. So we're just going ahead, and we are going in because one of the spaces is ours. We are in talks with another tenant who wants to open a restaurant and a bar. But again, it's not signed, it's not signed. But the whole point is the R A B is required to sell alcohol. Without an R A B, you cannot sell alcohol. So if, if a tenant needs to sell alcohol, he says, oh, you've already got R A B, that's one process done. Then he's got to go to T A B C for the formalities. They have to do background checks and all the things.
Right. So in terms of the actual seating, is it communal? And or is it broken down?
Although seating, yes. The, the courtyard seating is communal.
Okay. And then there was one of the hotels that commented in opposition mentioning shared parking spaces. Do we have?
I don't, go ahead, complete your sentence.
Follow up about that?
Did they comment on the shared parking spaces? I think they.
Traffic especially, is I think what they were, they were concerned.
I, I don't know what, I don't know what their thing is. I really don't know.
Okay.
About the shared parking spaces. I'll have to go into the agreements to see, or you know, those, what do you call them?
Yeah, what, what they said was parking and traffic congestion, noise and public safety, market saturation, and economic impact. That's, that's what they said.
I don't know why they have a problem. Again, everyone's entitled to their own opinion. The only thing I can say, say is they loved it when we were there, but the new owners, maybe just they don't like my face or what, I don't know. But I do know that they sell, Hyatt Place sells beer. I don't think they sell liquor. So I, I cannot speak for them.
Did you own this property in two thousand nineteen?
Yes.
Okay, why did you rescind the R A B in two thousand nineteen?
Because my civil engineer, Mike Glenn, he told me when, when we were going for the permits, he's saying the city is asking, requesting for you to rescind the R A B. Because like I said earlier, I think so the, the, the way R A B works is if you're not using that R A B, you go to rescind it, or why don't you give it up? And then in the future, you can apply for it again. It's something like that.
Okay, that was your understanding, too?
That was my understanding. Is if you're not using the R A B, it could go to someone else. Because am I, can someone tell me is R A B works in a quota system, like there's?
Question would be for city staff.
Okay.
Yeah, so the development plan, or the PUD, had a certain amount of acreage that could go toward the R A B. So that was probably the discussion of, you know, if you give up, I think it's six acres or five acres, whatever you are, then yes, someone else theoretically could use it. But you didn't have to give it up. You could have kept it. But I think part of the discussion too was you were restricted to only being able to do the restaurant. So by taking it to the community commercial, that opened up your options for redevelopment too. So I, I don't know if that was part of the discussion as well, but you didn't have to give up the, the ratio. Yes, it opened up further people, but there was, there was still enough in terms of what was in that pool.
Yeah, I didn't think too much about it. If the city is requesting something, why not give it? I mean, it's there, I'm not using it now, why not give it? So I never thought too much of it at that time, is to fight the city and say, no, I don't want to give it, give it up.
So just to clarify, this property's been a R A B since, what, two thousand six?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Richard?
Yes. I want to tell you, I can support this because I feel one of the other, one of the things you bring with the variances of the restaurants and that, that's going to attract people from the other hotels that want to change. If, if they're in town for four or five days, they can walk across the street and have a pick of several different restaurants. I like the concept, so I could support it.
Thank you.
I agree with Commissioner Preacher's comment, and because, being honest, I was just there, and it's a pain to get there.
It is.
I mean, I'm serious, like to go around, I mean, to, eh, through one fourteen to one on Hill, to go all that curve around, I mean, it's, it's not easy to drive to just to go, to go there. So I do believe that you're relying a lot on the hotel traffic to, for, yeah, for the side, so.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much. You can sit, yeah? All right, is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of this item? Anybody in opposition? No? Then I will turn it back to the commission. We are on the first item, the twenty-one, which is the one that's for final action by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
If there's no further discussion amongst commissioners, I'd like to move Development Plan twenty twenty-five, three fifty-seven D V P for final action by planning and zoning for approval.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second for, for approval. Please vote. And the motion passes seven to one. All right, item number twenty-two, which is the companion case, zoning case twenty twenty-five dash three eleven dash Z C, again, located at six sixty Walnut Ridge Drive. You already spoke. I assume you didn't have anything further to say? Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? No, there not being anyone, I will turn to the commission for any discussion and then a motion.
I'd just like to make, if I can make a comment real quick on this one, because it is a little different. I, I think it's a close call with, I mean, particularly with the staff recommending against granting the variance of the parking. I, I'm sympathetic to that this was built out under what sounds like a plan with this parking layout. I know circumstances changed with alcohol, but given the circumstances, I, I can support it, so. So with that, I'll go ahead and move to approve, recommend approval for zoning case twenty twenty-five, three eleven dash Z C.
I'll second. All right, we have a motion and a second recommending approval. Please vote. All right, and it passes, passes seven to one. So this part still does still need to go to the city council, though. So you will want to go to the city council meeting on October twenty-third on that item. All right.
Thank you for coming in for a sentence to us.
Item twenty-three, zoning case twenty twenty-five dash three twelve dash Z C, located at twenty-eight twenty-eight Winslow Street. He is the applicant present. You were very patient. And yeah, I don't think there's anybody else who's going to want to talk because everybody else has left. Well, you don't have to say anything further, but if, you know, if you don't want to.
My name's Elsie, by the way.
Your name?
Elsie?
Elsie, and you live here in Irving?
No, I live in Garland.
In Garland, okay.
Yeah, so the drive will be fun.
Oh, and you're lasting?
Oh, Guzman.
Guzman, all right, thank you. Okay, you just want to open it up for questions?
Uh, yeah.
All right, do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay. Well, then I think you're done. But just for the record, is there anybody who'd like to speak in favor or in opposition to this item? There not being anyone, I will return it to the commission.
There's no further discussion, I'd like to move zoning case twenty twenty-five dash three twelve dash Z C to city council for approval.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second recommending approval. Please vote. And the motion passed unanimously. So it does still need to go to city council, so you're not off the hook completely, but um, but you're done for tonight. Hope you have a good drive home. All right, that is it. We are adjourned at nine twelve P M.